How you doing Lisa? Thinking of you. Some days we drown, some days we swim.
I always have that life.
Michaela, can you get Bobby's attention?
Yes. Mrs. Hunt, Gordon, like your attention.
Happy belated birthday.
Thank you Gordon, you too. Can you tell me why you were wearing a topless blouse?
I could but I have to.
So he has events that he's a part of like he goes to like right after.
I meant to ask.
I was just trying to class up negotiations.
Did you bring cookies?
I did not bring cookies to that one.
We once again have no coffee tonight. No, once again, no coffee. Three times in a row now for events. I talk to me and Joe every single time. I feel like Joe's on strike.
Did you have a busy day today?
No water either. I don't choke.
I really love this like non-stake. Yeah, that's the best thing ever. I guess so, yeah. No, I think probably the coffee.
Thank you.
So just so everyone's aware, we have a forum to start the meeting, but we do not have a high enough forum to take a vote on a budget at this point, but I do know that Eric and Mike will be joining us. We start the meeting because I know there's a lot of people here who took time out of their day to be with us. So we're going to call this meeting to order now at 6:00. I'd like to begin by taking something a little bit out of order. Last month when we convened, we wanted to take the time to recognize Chief Douglas for all of his work with our hazmat situation here at the high school and coordinating his team from Kingston, but also the mutual aid who responded to our incident here at the high school. And on behalf of the school committee and the three towns, I just wanted to thank you for your care for our students, your timely response in working with the superintendent, not only on that Friday, but throughout the weekend to send clear messaging home to the parents and the schools about it being safe to come back to school that probably won't. And I wanted to convey that thanks to you.
Thank you very much. If I could just take a moment of your time, one thing that I need to make a very clear point on is you don't do this alone. This requires an enormous amount of help and that help comes from all different areas, whether it was school staff specifically, if school nurse was absolutely fantastic in handling and managing. Public safety and mutual aid partners were terrific. They responded quickly, they did what they had to do, hazardous materials, folks from the state also. I think for those of you who may not have seen the news tonight, Fox 25 did a follow-up on the incident, just to make that pretty public now. And there is some degree of, I don't want to say certainty, but suspicion that it could have been a vape pen. So that is out there and we did agree that that is the level, that is certainly within the realm of reasonableness that it could have been. So we allowed them to release that from the state report. We agreed that that was okay to release. Having said that, there's no certainty, there's no physical evidence of what this actually was, so it does still remain a little bit of a mystery. We can tell you certainly what it wasn't, but we can't tell you unfortunately exactly what it was. If that does along the way come to delight either a student confesses, which sometimes will happen 30, 60, 90, a year later, then we'll certainly pass it on and share it. But I can't thank the school staff enough. We've spent a tremendous amount of time over the past several years preparing for incidents, unfortunately active shooter incidents in many cases. And in these cases, you draw your resources from those plants. And the MCI resources, which was the ambulance, the hazmat team and so forth, were drawn mostly from those plants. So it all worked well. I assure you that the teams, if you will, police, fire, school, hazmat, all worked very, very well together that day. I'm very proud of my folks and I will say you should be very proud of yours.
And please extend as anybody on your team how grateful we are and our sincere thanks.
Thank you very much for having me tonight. Thank you.
So we are going to have public participation tonight, but before we begin that, as many of you are aware, the Student Opportunity Act passed this year. And as part of that, we have to submit paperwork for our portions of the funds that we're receiving as part of that new legislation for serving as Assistant Superintendent, just so lunch is going to be at school. Some of that paperwork and seek feedback from the school committee and also from the public.
Thank you. So the Student Opportunity Act is a result of the recommendations of the 2015 Foundation Budget Review Commission, which rewrote the formula for financing schools in Massachusetts. Eighty-five percent of new funding went to 37 districts. There are 351 districts in the Commonwealth, so they took what's called a bifurcated approach for the districts getting less than 1.5 million in new funding, which includes Silver Lake. We are submitting the short form and the plan really focuses on how would any new funding be spent by the district to close student opportunity or achievement gaps. The three words that the guidance focuses on are adopting, deepening, or continuing. So in a district where we're not receiving a significant amount of new funding, ours really focuses on the overlap between our current plan and what we're trying to deepen as opposed to adopting lots of new staff or new programs. So the document that we've created is an overlap of trying to focus on closing opportunity and achievement gaps while also recognizing the work already underway in the district. So our first part of the plan has to identify subgroups where students may not be achieving as well as other students. So having analyzed the data, the places where we can close achievement gaps are with some of our students with disabilities and also students who qualify for Title I services. So I wrote in the plan that Silver Lake staff are committed to all students and work extremely hard to meet the needs of all students. And this plan talks about some specific ways that we can do that. The state asks us to really use evidence-based programs to close gaps. It identifies 17 approaches that are, the state considers evidence-based. One of those approaches is expanding access to career and technical education. So with the potential addition of an allied health teacher in the proposed budget, that aligns with the evidence-based approach the state recommends to expand access to career and technical education. So you'll see in the plan that I've submitted, that position is identified. Another approach being undertaken in Silver Lake is our work with McTae and Associates to create high-quality learning experiences for students using the understanding by design approach. So the state's looking for high-quality aligned curriculum. Our current work to do that and working with Ms. Carter to be trained on that at the middle and high school levels clearly align with that. So that's part of the plan as well. Another research-based way to really promote success for all students is inclusion and co-teaching professional development. Research shows that students with disabilities and all students can achieve the highest levels when they're included to the fullest extent possible. So our aim is to provide more inclusion and co-teaching professional development for Silver Lake staff. One part of the plan that I think the state guidance really helps with is how do you know if you're successful, like any good implementation? So there's a real focus on how are you tracking if you're getting better at closing achievement and opportunity gaps? State encourages us to use their metrics, which we will, which include the English Language Arts, MCAS achievement, math, science, technology, engineering, as well as our four-year cohort graduation rate. So we'll be using those four metrics to make sure that we're improving. The last part is, the last commitment is engaging all families. I personally think this is one of the best parts of the plan. It asks us to make sure that we're doing everything possible to hear from our stakeholders and really get input as to how we can close opportunity and achievement gaps. So here in Silver Lake, tonight when we share the plan, we'll include an opportunity for the public to include any input that they think would help us to close achievement and opportunity gaps for Silver Lake students. Dr. Prue and I also will provide some sort of opportunity for a meet and greet. We're still thinking about the best way to do this in light of current conditions. That would be on March 18th. I've also designed a survey that can go out to all families for people who can't be present in order for them to provide input. And in the spirit of really reaching out to all families, it will be translated to the language spoken in the home so we can really try to hear from everyone. So that's an overview of the Student Opportunity Plan for District of Silver, for Silver Lake. Each town has its, has to have its own plan submitted, so we've done that for two more and we have Plunkton coming up. And that plan could be voted, the school committee has the choice, could be voted this evening, or I can enter the entire plan by the state deadline of April 1st and then just go back and re-enter the approval date. Obviously it's a decision that the school committee can make.
So I gave the directive to the Assistant Superintendent that most likely we will vote whatever input we give tonight, unless there's any major changes by Plunkton, Plunkton town vote, that it can be submitted with our approvals. If any major changes are made, then we would bring it back to the table for a vote at our next meeting. So does anybody from the committee have anything they'd like to discuss, me, the Assistant Superintendent and myself, in regards to the Student Opportunity Act?
Just going to make a motion.
First, we need to give input, then we're going to open it up to the public. So anybody for any minute, any questions, concerns?
Ryan, can you just explain a little bit about opportunity gaps? Like achievement gap is something we've heard a lot about, but opportunity gap is kind of a new, a new thing. And it looks in here like we're mostly talking about achievement gaps here at Silver Lake, but can you just talk a little bit about opportunity gap? Like what, what would that look like?
Well, I think one thing you want to make sure of is that all students have, you know, an opportunity to engage in, to take certain classes and to have opportunities to take certain programming. So for example, it might include another look at any sort of course requirements or levels, things like that. And sometimes if students don't take a certain course their freshman year, it could be harder to reach other levels. So I think that's an example of an opportunity gap and I know that you've had your NIASC review and recently one thing that they really try to do too, which I think is in line with the state, is push down on the number of levels that you might have, going from AP to honors to college prep one to college prep two and potentially having other levels. So that's an example of an opportunity gap where students may, they move to the high school and are at a certain, are recommended for a certain level, they may not have the opportunity. So we're, we're looking to really meet the needs of all students so that if when students put in the effort, that they are able to have access to the really good programming that exists at schools like Silver Lake.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to open up the floor to any input from the community focusing on the Student Opportunity Act. Also, we open the floor momentarily to any comments from the audience, so I think it's all, not just for the Student Opportunity Act. Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve the filing with second input from the committee and the public of Silver Lake.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Appreciate your work and my vote. So I'm going to, a regular portion for public participation, I'd like to strike this acknowledgement that I received notice from the SLDA president. They were sad, shocked and disappointed that the committee didn't speak more about the budget at our last meeting, specifically to the fact that the budget as presented included a reduction of two teaching staff members from the high school. So at this point, I'd like to open it up to any public participation. While your president speaks, I appreciate you being there. Okay, seeing no public participation, I'm going to move on to the approval of minutes. Lisa, it looks like we have some minutes we didn't have at our last meeting.
Correct, the 16th, January 16th and then February. At February's meeting, we only did January 9th, but then we had an odd meeting in between.
So we also have one from the 9th, who goes, been approved?
The, the January 9th had been approved, just the 16th.
And the 9th, okay. So let's look at our January 16th, 2020, regular session minutes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve. So moved. Second, any discussion, amendments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Let's move on to our regular session minutes from our Thursday, February 13th, 2020 meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve those regular session minutes from our February 13th meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or amendments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Obey.
Abstentions? Can I have the abstentions for Lisa to be able to record, please?
And just so I know, I abstained on the last one as well.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. Not as quick to the.
On the executive session minutes from our Thursday, February 13th meeting, I would accept a motion to approve the poll.
So moved.
Right, a second. Thank you very much. Followed us in favor? Abstentions? Same three. Thank you very much, everyone, I appreciate it. All right. So I know that Eric is a wrestling banquet tonight and he is going to be running over here as soon as he can. So keeping with the agenda as written, we're not going to miss the old.
Thank you very much. So in your handout this evening is our proposal for a vape deviation program. And I am thrilled to share that I have a team of staff members here this evening who are going to review and highlight this program for your review. I'm joined by Mrs. Pratt, my assistant principal, Officer Allen, our school resource officer, Ms. Svenson, our school nurse, Ms. Cranshaw, one of our guidance counselors. Hold on, I'm looking to see who else is here. Thank you, Ms. Wilkinson, who's our school adjustment counselor, Ms. Warnock, one of our wellness teachers, who am I missing in the crowd? Thank you, Senora Drew, one of our Spanish teachers. Am I missing anybody? Thank you, Ms. Lopes, you're hiding behind Leslie Ann. Are going to, they are the ones who have been sort of, their, their blood, sweat and tears have really gone into developing this program. And so I'm actually going to turn it over to them to present to you what we would like to do to help educate our students and our families to help curb the addiction and the issues that we're seeing associated with student vape use. We've talked a little bit before about what this group has been focusing on. Next month you'll hear from our students as well and the work that we're doing together, united to try to combat this. So I'm going to turn it over to you guys. Thank you.
So we've prepared a bit of a presentation, so I'm going to just give an overview of what the proposed program that we have envisioned and then open up to the group to sort of let everybody make an introduction and speak to if we were to implement what we are calling the LEAP program, what everyone's individual role would be in helping to educate our core students. So our proposed vape deviation program had been named LEAP, the LEAP acronym, which stands for LACER, Education, Action and Prevention. So up until this point, you know, when a student is vaping in school, our current policy is more of a discipline-based approach. And as the issue of teen vaping has become more and more prevalent, not only in our community, but throughout the country and throughout really the globe, we have begun to examine a different approach in which it's more education-based, educating students, empowering them to make healthy decisions moving forward. So that's sort of the basis for our LEAP and our efforts. So the LEAP program would be a five-week course. And the idea of that is if students are continuously focused on the issue, educating themselves and accessing different information over a period of time with support from school staff. Our hope is that that will help them over the long term to break their habit, become educated and also empower them to support other people, whether it's their peers or others in the community. So at the beginning of this course, you know, to sort of underscore the importance of the course, we would have students enter a contract that they agreed to participate and complete all five weeks of the LEAP program. It would start with a student meeting with their assistant principal and then each week they would cover a different topic, and I'll go over those in a minute, related to vaping, the associated risks and behaviors. Parents and guardians would also be invited to be a part of this process. So again, at the beginning of the five weeks, it would involve a meeting with a student, their parent and their guardian to give an overview of the LEAP program, the requirements and what is involved. So these are the different topics and each week a different staff member is sort of associated with the topic for that week. So week one would start with sort of the basics and the essentials, the medical, the health and science-related issues. And students would meet with our school nurse. The second week, the topic is more social emotional aspects, mental health, addiction, and that would involve a meeting with the school adjustment counselor. Week three, more to do with sort of legal consequences, you know, the implications for students that are minors who are vaping, the dangers that are associated, the more and more that use by adolescents is prohibited. We're seeing that students are using substances that aren't really regulated or they're purchasing them and by means that could get them into further trouble, not just health-related trouble. That week would involve a meeting with our school resource officer. The fourth week had more to do with sort of like media influences, marketing, how adolescents have really been targeted by the industry. That week, students have some flexibility in what staff member they would meet with. They may just opt to choose somebody that they have a close connection with, maybe a coach, maybe a teacher that they have an established relationship with. If a student's sort of struggling to pick that contact person, we already have a group of teachers who have volunteered and said, I'm ready, I'm available, I'll be waiting in the wings and you tell me that there's a student that wants to talk and needs some support and give my name out. Week five is more about certain planning for the future, so taking on the information that students have accessed throughout the program, allowing them to reflect, set goals and sort of assess themselves and hopefully give themselves a big pat on the back about how much they've learned and how empowered they're feeling. And that would involve a meeting with either guidance staff and/or the assistant principal, possibly both. So here is just sort of an overview of how it would learn. Look, so each week a student would meet with their assistant principal and they would receive a packet with assignments and access to online content. The students would then identify who the contact person is for that week and they would be responsible for scheduling a meeting with that staff member towards the end of the week to review what they've covered. Throughout the week, students will complete a number of assignments and each week it's sort of catered to whatever the topic is. So it might be some readings, it might be short videos that cover the topic. And then there are related assignments, perhaps corresponding questions that relate to the video or reflection piece about what they learned during the week. When they meet with the staff member at the end of the week, they'll have completed that work and it sort of will provide a basis for a conversation so that the staff member can review the assignment, see what the teacher did, that the student did answer questions and provide any counseling or support that might be appropriate. Our intent as a group, so we've, we've already sort of put together a proposed curriculum, but we're really hopeful that it will be fluid, that it can be updated. You know, one of the things about vaping is that the information is changing all the time. And so our hope is that, you know, if something comes out that's more relevant or more timely or has new information, that we can sort of swap things in and out to really help students. At the beginning of the program, staff will obtain a baseline from a student. So basically during that intake and interview, get an idea of what a student's perception is. And then at the end of the five weeks, sort of repeat those steps to see, you know, the student's progress, change in habits, their beliefs and what their philosophy is about remaining vape free. All students will receive an official certificate of completion. So in the conferences that many of us have attended, students who have gone through similar programs have talked about how actually getting a physical certificate is really important. It's sort of indicates that they have done something that their work is recognized and just gives them sort of a good feeling moving forward. And again, at the conclusion of the process, parents and guardians will receive communication from the staff in school and if appropriate, additional resources. If the student's in need of ongoing support, we have a list of resources to provide and share with them. So in conclusion, this is an idea that is not sort of totally self-generated. We put a lot of work into it to make it helpful and sort of used our own experience at the high school. But we do want to acknowledge the work of Tom Brow, who's from Seaside Educational Consultants. And we recently presented at a conference that members of our administration team had attended and presented information to other educators about a similar program. The other thing that is, I think, a really provocative aspect to touch on is that this group here tonight is to talk to you about LEAP. But our school has many different kind of stakeholders who are vested in addressing this problem and how concerning it is. So our SAD students, members of the SAD group have been making efforts. They're going to come and speak to you next week. We have an idea for some public service announcements for the students for doing a school-wide pledge to remain vape free. Students in our allied health program are working on a number of initiatives. So everyone is sort of collaborating together. And then the final piece I wanted to touch on is that if this program were to go into effect and it involves some handbook language changes. So our school council has been working on some proposed language and they would vote on that next month, April, and then come to present a possible handbook change that would reflect that we're no longer looking at just an out-of-school suspension, but instead of looking at more education. So I thought what would be helpful, I've done enough talking, is if the different members of our group who were able to come tonight could all just introduce themselves and talk a little bit about your anticipated role in the program or any thoughts you want to share.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Svenson, I'm still here at the high school. So this, the plan is that students would meet with me in the first week and we would talk about the medical aspects of this and how it affects your.
Students in our allied health program are working on a number of initiatives. So everyone is sort of collaborating together. And then the final piece I wanted to touch on is that if this program were to go into effect and it involves some handbook language changes. So our school council has been working on some proposed language and they would vote on that next month, April, and then come to present a possible handbook change that would reflect that we're no longer looking at just an out-of-school suspension, but instead of going to more education. So I thought what would be helpful, I've done enough talking, is if the different members of our group who were able to come tonight could all just introduce themselves and talk a little bit about your anticipated role in the program or any thoughts you want to share.
Hi, this is Mrs. Bass, I'm a school health care high school. So the plan is that students would meet with me in the first week and we would talk about the medical aspects of this and how it affects your body and the changes. And, you know, sometimes students don't actually get, you know, what actually happens. So that would be our conversation. And the things that I have put in as far as articles that they can read or videos that they can look at. You know, we have some of them now, but as Mrs. Pratt said, it's very fluid. This stuff is changing all the time, so we'll be moving those in and out of that program. Hopefully that's a place to start to try and give them some truth as to exactly what it is that they're projecting, what it will do to their bodies. So they meet with me and then they come back again with a review and discuss again, you know, what they think they have learned and, you know, and hopefully they've got a better insight into what they've been doing. So that's my piece.
Hi, my name is Leah Wilkins, I'm a school adjustment counselor. And I'm going to be meeting with the students during the second week, which is really going to be a focus on the social emotional impact that vaping has on students. And so during that week, we'll cover materials that will include the impacts of addiction and how vaping can increase their likelihood to become addicted to substances, not only nicotine, but other substances as well. And then also the changes in the brain that it causes and how that can impact their long-term mental health. And we'll also go over the social impacts of vaping. So topics to touch on peer pressure, how it can be socially isolating, different various aspects of the social emotional side of the dangers of vaping.
I'm Andrea Crancha, I'm one of the guidance counselors at the high school. Officer Allen and I have worked on the legal consequences and dangers. These together, I'll let you talk about that in a little more in a second. But certainly I'll be involved and will. Last week, with the students regarding the reflection piece, the notice throughout the entire program is a lot of accountability on the student, which is really important. We decide it's really important and they really need to take ownership in wanting to stop and really recognizing what they're doing to their bodies. So that last week, the reflection piece is really about having it come full circle. The idea of the program is kind of like regular therapy, where you have to buy into it. So the goal is really to get these kids to buy into the program and want to.
Thank you. Good evening, we're here at the school resource officer. So what you were saying, once they get to our sort of component, they'll have a great idea of everything that goes into vaping, what it does to their bodies. So I'm going to come in there and talk to them about, you know, the law enforcement aspect of it. A lot of the illicit components that can be involved in vaping. I'll talk to them about some of the troubling things that we can see in the street now, things that vapes are being laced with, examples of, you know, kids meeting R candy at different schools, receiving overdoses now and I'll be putting the vapes. So it's important that they have an understanding about all the dangers that are apparently the purchase of these illicit vapes.
My name is Jess Drew and apparently I do not follow directions very well. So I am a Spanish teacher here and also I've coached a boys tennis team in the past. So I will be a volunteer staff member where students can meet with me either as a teacher or as a coach. We can talk about, you know, how it's affecting them academically and also, you know, sports fields or events and things like that. But one thing I really want to say about this program is that the message that it sends to our kids is it gives them an option and it sends the message that yes, you've made a bad choice and there are consequences to that, but we believe in you and we want you to be here and we want you to remain involved in our community. And allows, it allows us as a group and as a school to say, we want you to be here and we want you to remain a part of this community. And it gives us the opportunity to reach out to those kids who maybe don't have faculty from that little staff member that they feel comfortable with. And instead of just sending them out and saying, "You made a mistake, figure it out on your own at home for five days", we're going to give them the resources over the span of those weeks to really sort it out with us. So I think that that really is going to allow us to bring kids back into the community.
So can we?
Yes, floor is yours. Thank you all, by the way.
Can I actually ask a question?
Please.
First of all, this is a wonderful, broad group of assets to bring together for the students. I commend you all for your time and commitment. I think it's a great idea. Is this only being offered to students who get caught vaping? If I'm a student and I really want to do something to help stop from doing that and I haven't been caught here yet doing it, can I participate?
Yes, so that's an excellent question. It's something we've talked about in our sort of planning and preliminary discussions. We are hopeful that students will feel open and that they'll know that the support is there. So it doesn't have to be a gotcha, but it could be, "Hi, I'm struggling. I know you have these resources." One of the pieces that I think the students that come to the meeting next week will speak about is that they very much feel empowered that peer-to-peer education is something that is going to be a driving force of bringing about change. And so there's been talks about even having a student support group where students will meet within the building and if they're struggling, they can, you know, we heard a really powerful story from a student recently who was able to kick her habit and she would like to share that if she's available. So as we presented tonight, it's sort of an alternative to the present approach, but it would also be open to students that are ill-equipped.
How many students do you anticipate you might reach with this program? Just based on sort of, you know, the experiences with the sort of old way of sort of dealing with kids who are caught versus, you know, this new approach? Like one a week, one a month? You know, like what's the volume?
I mean, it would be a direct correlation to the number of vaping offenses that we have, but I anticipate it would actually go above those who are getting caught, as you phrased it, and also be a venue for people who just need help and assistance. So our hope is that, you know, there's no limit to how many people we can help with this program. You know, they may all start at different points, you know, there'll be staggering points. You know, Leah may be in week one with one student, but maybe in week three with four other students, so.
I'm just trying to understand like the volume of students that we have that, you know, are struggling with this.
Yeah, I mean, I want to be careful to say how many.
No, just roughly, like just, you know, just trying to understand a little bit about volume.
Yes, there will be more than one a month.
Okay, that's good. I'll take that.
So the committee here has been talking about vaping earnestly for over two years now. We signed on with our attorney general and her fight against Juul and other vaping industries targeting our students. Two months ago, when Michaela and Jim were talking about their forward leaning attitudes towards addressing the vaping issues, the committee unanimously and enthusiastically supported the speakers you were having come in and the methodologies you were trying to bring to the table. Zero tolerance has never been one of my favorite terms in education. I know it's easy, it's quick, but this is a thoughtful approach and it's going to be hard, but it's totally worth it. And we appreciate all the time and effort you're putting into this program to take care of our kids. Because that, at the end of the day, is the only thing that really matters. And this is definitely showing that passion for our students. So thank you very much for putting this together. We wish you all a wonderful day.
I'd also like to thank you for really focusing on building those relationships that will help us to care for our students in a way that consequence alone could not possibly do and has not shown to be effective in our practices. So thank you for trying to put something together that helps bring students back to our community as opposed to the school.
Thank you. I would just like to say that the group of staff members that have been involved in this effort, that everything has been voluntary and every time we meet, I am so impressed by like the energy, the ideas that they brought to the table. There is definitely a group before you tonight that has a passion for supporting our students and helping to address this serious issue. So it's been a pleasure working with them.
Great job. Thank you. Thank you. So the second item on my agenda this evening was an out-of-state field trip request. Due to the concerns with COVID-19 and the governor's recommendations, I am withdrawing that request at this time. And I will move on to number three. I have a donation request. Don and Janine Orca would like to donate $500 to cover the cost of a U-Haul rental for our METG club. A rental truck was needed to move the set for the competitions at other schools. Mr. Orca also volunteered to drive the truck on behalf of the students. So with your approval?
Accept a motion to accept a donation?
Second, ma'am.
Second. Second. Okay, so of course.
I will send the appropriate, thank you.
All those are fair.
Great, thank you. And then a couple of school updates. I'm sorry that I'm taking all the time, Jim, tonight. Yesterday was our first annual Credit for Life Fair. It was a major success. Our students had the opportunity to learn how to balance a budget, make financial decisions and experience what real-life financial management is like. Each student who participated was given a career, a salary and a credit score. We had booths set up in the gym and they were staffed with volunteers who helped guide those financial choices. Credit counselors reviewed their budget to see if they were in fact living within their means. And our hope with the activity was that afterwards, our students would have a new perspective on financial management and that they left feeling better prepared for an independent and financially responsible future. It was an impressive event. I posted a bunch of pictures yesterday on social media if you've had an opportunity to see yet. But this event would not have been possible without the following people. Mrs. Kalanowski and Ms. Sheehan, who are our Credit for Life Fair advisors. Their vision, planning and coordination of this event was uncomparable. I'd like to recognize and extend my appreciation to the Credit for Life committee members. Ms. Wedeman, Mrs. McMillan, Mr. Savoy and Mr. Sawyer, who are all math teachers here at the high school. Ms. McGee and Mr. Eklund from our school committee. And Mrs. Anna Kloon of Eastern Bank. Yesterday's event would not be possible without the financial support of a School to Careers Connecting Activities grant, which was secured by Dr. Prue. The Financial Education Innovation Fund grant, which was secured by Ms. Kalanowski and Ms. Sheehan. And a PTO mini-grant that was given to us from President Sue Corcoran. A very special thank you to our guidance counselors and to our students in carpentry, culinary and art for providing refreshments, helping with the event and the beautiful handcrafted reality check wheel, which was a big hit with the students. So thank you to everybody and we appreciate those of you who are able to attend or volunteer as well for that event. Last month, the end of the month, February 29th, students participated in the one-act METG competition and they walked away with eight out of our 26 students being independently recognized by the judges as part of that competition. So I'd like to recognize several of our students for excellence in stage management and technical directing and only one of these awards is given. That was given to our student Liz Protro. An All-Star Award for Lead Acting was given to Caitlin Beckwith. An All-Star Award for Supporting Acting was given to Tony Mello. An All-Star Award for Ensemble Acting was given to Kara Nagel. An All-Star Award for Scene Design and Archistry was awarded to Ava O'Connor, Allison Pettah, Sarah Anderson and Carrie Driscoll. And I'd like to also thank two of our teachers, Ms. Orca and Ms. Farrar, of whom I think are here tonight, right? For volunteering as the METG advisors.
And Ms. Barry.
And Ms. Barry. Thank you.
Well done.
We'll have to get it on the books.
A lot of people who have part of theater don't realize that that's the equivalent of making an All-Star award. Hats off to those students and the teachers who brought them to that program. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Any questions for Ms. Bill?
You're welcome. Thank you.
Jim?
Yes, thank you. So the first is the out-of-state field trip. So we have an out-of-state field trip to Kennedy Space Center that we had scheduled for May 20th to return on May 24th. And I know we had talked about it in the winter meeting. So one of the things I, the reason why I bring it up tonight is that I feel, given the situation that we're currently in, is that I have to ask for your support to cancel this trip. And I met with the parents tonight to talk about that very situation and I talked about the governor's edict, so to speak. And they had asked tonight that I also ask you that we could possibly reschedule the trip next year without putting a date to it when it's safe for their children to go. They do not, they had voiced that they do not want their children to lose the opportunity to go. And, you know, so through that conversation, I had also voiced that I had also called all the contracts so that we could, they all said we could cancel and then reschedule another time. And the airlines said that they would give us a voucher and that we could reschedule that for another time. So using their voice, what I would like to do is cancel the trip on the 20th, but also get a vote to support rescheduling that trip for those students at a later date, which I would obviously bring back those dates here when it's safe to have that conversation.
Yeah, I think it's wise, especially with the guidance we're receiving at the state level at this point. I appreciate you reaching out to the parents and talking them through it. I know it can be stressful, lots of schools are going through it right now. I see no problem with us canceling and making a promise to come back to the table to approve a date in the future.
Jim, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Some of these kids are eighth graders now at this time?
They're all eighth graders.
They're all eighth graders, they're all going to be ninth grade by that time.
Correct.
It's going to be okay? Doesn't mean it's...
I mean, that was the conversation I had with them and, you know, obviously.
I think this time calls for some flexibility on that.
Would you just take both kids from next year and those kids together at the same time?
I wouldn't.
Come on, let's go with that.
I would, I would take them at two different times. I mean, if it turned out that, you know, that the date was, like, we have, I think we had, I don't have it memorized, but it was like 34 students that wanted to go. I mean, there was a, there was a large number of students. If that had diminished to only five said they could continue to go, then yes, I would do something that was mindful of that.
I can't imagine those kids who really want to go will give up the opportunity if we extend it to them.
Right. So it'll be separate and separate for obvious reasons.
Absolutely. I get an approval for Jim to cancel and to reschedule with the parents to come back to us with dates.
I'll make a motion to reschedule.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those are fair. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you for your support on that. It's funny, I was going to talk like Michaela did about like New York City and get approval, but I'm going to wait on that, even though it's for next year. I think it makes sense to just hold those conversations until we're in a different space, so. I'm going to move on. So grade six parent orientation. So we have our grade six parent orientation coming up on March 17th at 6:00 PM in the auditorium. It's when we invite all of the parents to come, ask questions. We talk about the course selection process, we talk about our building, we talk about our curriculum and things that they will be obviously curious about and things that they will need to know as they transition to the middle school. Given the uncertainty of some of the things that are coming up, I'm also planning a backup, which is that I will post my PowerPoint. Myself and the coordinators will narrate that and have it done in a virtual way and then be open for questions and things like that. But we're not there at that point yet, but I just wanted you guys to know that I do have a backup plan if we get to that point before that night. But that information will not just get lost, that our sixth grade parents will have that available to them and they'll have me available to them.
And Jim, just for the record tonight, if we get a few further guidance as things evolve in the state and we have to postpone a physical gathering, I appreciate that you posted the information, but you would be willing to reschedule at a time where it would be safe for parents from our three communities to come together?
A hundred percent, absolutely. And the only reason why that I would say, Jason, that I would post it immediately is obviously the course selection process has to happen so that we can build a master schedule, so that we can do our step-up day and have them on teams and have all those transitions be very meaningful for them. But I would absolutely do that and I would meet, just because of, I mean, I know that, I would still meet with parents that wanted to come in and have a conversation with me about any of the information or phone call or anything like that. So I would still make myself absolutely available for that.
Appreciate your flexibility in the situation.
Yeah. So that's the parent orientation. We have a spirit week that's coming up on the 16th to the 20th where our students and our student council put together different days that the kids can dress up. Things like Black and White Day, Team Apparel Day, USA Day, Flashback Day. It's a lot of fun for the kids and they lead up to March Madness, which happens on the 20th on that Friday night. Again, you know, there is a, you know, to be determined on that. Obviously, we're waiting for some direction from other things that, so there is a continued com- So, there is a continued conversation, but, I mean, that is the plan, but we may have to make adjustments. So, that's our spirit week in March Madness, our Junior District Music Festival. I just wanna make mention and congratulate Ella Piper, Jacob, Melanie, Rebecca, and Kalen for making it to the Junior District Music Festival. However, that was canceled due to the coronavirus, and they were not able to proceed for those reasons, so... But I still wanna make mention of their names.
Please let them know that we're proud of them, nonetheless, for making it to that level of the year.
Yes, I will, thank you. Program of Studies. So, I passed out the Program of Studies. So, last month, we talked about some teaching position cuts and what that would look like at the middle school and some changes that would need to adjust due to that. We had... In that adjustment, we had to make some adjustments to our rounds. So, I don't know if, Chris, you remember this last year, but I talked about why our off-team classes had higher numbers than our team classes. And that's because I was collapsing outside sections and then having them teach electives, and that's why those numbers were higher, and the on-team, I wasn't. So, what we would do to accommodate the loss of those two teaching positions is we have to ask our current teaching staff to then teach four on-team, and their fifth one would be the rounds class. So, it would raise the class size up to 21, 22 roughly. And then they would teach an additional class, which would be that rounds class. So, for instance, the math teachers would teach four in seventh grade of their math sections. And then their fifth section would be the prob... Probability and statistics. That's how that would happen. So, there is like a shuffle that had to happen, you know, to accommodate for the two teaching positions. And the Program of Studies has to adjust to reflect accurately what the new... The new design would be. So, if you look through... So, we would combine sculpture design and clay into a elective class. That's what you're seeing, the cut happened, but it's really being incorporated into the other class. And that's because that curriculum went from 60 days to 90 days, and that's how that's gonna need to be taught. The first one is add a grade seven STEM elective. And that's an elective that we can now teach at the seventh grade level because our round science teacher can now teach the Project Lead the Way classes as electives. The second... If you look down, the second piece of that is what we cut. So, I cut all the information that talked about how rounds ran currently because we're not running the rounds that way anymore. And then, if you go on to the next page where it says "add", these are the updates. So, instead of having rounds be three classes, for instance, we now have four classes as you have the four core teachers on each team. And these would be the four classes. It would be the Applied Science, which was the round science class. And Technology is now incorporated into the rounds on the team and taught by the team teacher. Global Challenges would be the Social Studies teacher on the team. They would teach that. Current Events is a part of the new Social Studies framework, so it fits perfectly in for that. Grade seven Statistics and Probability, that was the rounds math, and is now taught by the math teacher that's on the team. And Reading Between the Lines, we used to have an ELA course that was taught by the outside of the team. And due to the loss of that position, now we will have a course that's similar to that will be taught on the team by the ELA teacher on the team. So, if you look down, those are the new structures. That's the way that will fit. It'll be a round between four classes and not three. Health and Wellness, health was in the seventh grade. It stays in the seventh grade. There is additional course time for our health courses. So, instead of meeting in a rounds for 60 days, our health class now meets opposite wellness for 90 days. What that does, though, is it did eliminate the Healthology elective in the eighth grade. So, that was the cost of that. So, then, the electives are listed below. So, the students in the seventh grade will have the opportunity to select two electives to complete their schedule, and that is not dissimilar to what we currently do. And if you flip over to the eighth grade, very similar format. Again, four classes. The math lab, the tech lab goes on to the teams, taught by the math and science teacher. ELA is reading between the lines. And again, to align with our Social Studies curriculum, which is now Civics and Government. The rounds class of Social Studies Constitutional Law, so it'll be like a mock trial law-type class, which again fits with the new Social Studies curriculum. And then, as you can see below, these are the electives. So, students will select one elective in one foreign language or three electives with no foreign language. So, in the past, our electives were within the rounds. So, you had two rounds class, then you had an elective in the rounds. So, those are no longer in the rounds. You can see the rounds of those four with the four core teachers. And the electives have to come out, and we put them in as a selection process. So, they have one elective in a foreign language because foreign language meets every day, so it has to count as two. Or if they don't choose a foreign language, they get three electives that they can choose. I know it's... I know I'm talking about a lot of changes, and, you know, I'm sorry about the condensed time crunch, but it is, you know, things that we have to have in place so that we can move forward and do the other things to help kids transition to the middle school. So, I apologize for that.
No apology needed. Thank you for your explanation. Do you need your other questions for Jim? So, we're gonna just vote this until we vote the budget and see where we are with things. But we appreciate you putting this together so we know the implications of the choices we made tonight.
Would it be okay, Jason, to still vote this tonight? Or...
Why would you need me to vote?
Because I have to change...
For the parents?
I have to change the course selection sheets, the Program of Studies.
Understood, alright. So, after we vote the budget, if we need to rescind this vote, we can do that. Okay? Okay, so...
I apologize, but...
No, I didn't wanna be doing a pickle either. I just... I don't want this to be a commitment necessarily to the vote for the budget. So, we'll vote the course changes you've made. If in our discussion anything changes, we'll rescind that vote.
That's fine, thank you.
Jim, it's not your fault, it's our fault. Take into account this.
No, it's a tough situation. Everybody understands that, so...
Let's give Jim the authority to make these changes or entertain a motion to accept the course changes as presented.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? It's your name. Thank you, Jim, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Christine.
Thank you. Really fantastic. Once again, your package, here's a financial. As of right now, the budget is still holding pretty well where we are. There are painful deficits, about $6,000, that will be absorbed within their categories. They're all minor in nature. There are two homes that have risen to a more significant level. Page three of the detail, about three quarters of the way down the page is the homeless transportation area. And right now, we have a deficit of $20,291, which means we've had expenditures of about $57,000. And this is through February, so that will continue to grow. But that's where we are right now. This is activity through February. That's the latest information that we have back page. And then, the next area is under psychological contracted services at the high school. It's on the very last page of the detail. It's right at the top of the page. Right now, there's a deficit of $63,884. We have some students that are attending Recovery High School, and that's for the tuition that we need to pay for their students. And that's a newer event, so that's why I had prepared before, and I had mentioned it in next year's budget, there was an allotment for that. Any questions?
Any questions for Christine? All right. All right, you are superintendent.
In fact, we will comment. We can ask the committee and ask them to work with the team to get our part of the cuts without the additional staff. And we met to discuss that. Since then, a couple of things have changed. Before I do that, I just wanna mention that prior to Joy presenting the first version of the budget, $106,750 were cut from original requests in the high school. The middle school had cut over $60,000 in requests from their budget before you even saw version one. So, there were... And in terms of the technology budget, just to give you a sense, we have already cut from the original version of the technology budget. The high school and middle school combined $102,500 from technology. So, those cuts were already taken in addition to the non-replacement of a high school aide who had resigned, the non-replacement of a high school aide who had retired. And then, in version three, the proposal of two FTE teaching positions, which have been cut. So, to give you a sense of things that have already been cut from the budget, these items would be no additional cuts potentially to the budget. So, the first two... Well, the first one is very good news. So, Christine had a meeting the other day, and it was confirmed that they thought the group is... Insurance would be at 2%. So, we will be able to decrease that budget by $29,000. I also spoke with Christine, and she could give probably a better history as to how, why this particular line item is what it is in terms of the bid fuel clause in terms of transportation. But we talked about the possibility of decreasing that by $10,000 because there are many years when she does... When it is not necessary to use that line item. Again, that... Christine, certainly you...
I can just add a little to. Our current contract includes a clause where there was an adjustment if gasoline exceeds a certain percentage of where it was when the contract was negotiated. And our old contract was a 5%, if it sort of exceeded 5%, they'd be able to bill us for a fuel adjustment clause. Which we really haven't experienced all that often. It's been a handful of times that we've been charged for that. In the process of going up to bid for the new contract, I have reviewed many other contracts and tried to find other language that were... And I believe the way with the new contract that puts in the bid would no longer necessitate the need to have an amount in our budget for the fuel clause adjustment. So, I feel at this time... Because that bid is out, just waiting for the results, I feel at this time that we could reduce the budget by that. That's what I had in there, was $10,000 for next year.
Go ahead.
So, on the May 4 municipal group, I know they were using money from their reserves. Had they talked about whether or not that was in all cash or is that... Was that money invested? Because if that money was invested, are they gonna revisit the number?
They... They were aware of the current situation that existed, and they did discuss that. And they did not mention if it was cash or investments. That did not come up in the conversation.
Okay.
There seemed to be a comfort level with doing that, and the steering committee had strongly recommended that, and that was the consensus yesterday.
And just to note, I don't know if anyone knows, but Christine did put the bus bid out, and...
Yes, it is out.
It is out there, so that...
That was Christine, right?
I almost called you.
So, then, in kind of created this in tiers so that we're moving from our... What would hurt us...
Least.
Least. And again, it's not... It's not that simple because the reality is, is that as you get to some of these categories, there are no... There are no good options. So, the first one was the high school deducting $10,000 from grounds of fertilization because originally... Well, what happened was we have been talking about having a study to determine priorities. So, what would happen is that we would delay the baseball field work until we had that study. And we would continue maintenance of the baseball field. This isn't to say that we wouldn't maintain the field, but the likelihood of it occurring next year, we wouldn't wanna do the work anyways prior to the study. So, that's number one. The second is $1,400 in teaching supplies. That was a wellness laptop. That's no longer needed. This would bring us to a $50,400 decrease. We have provided you with additional options that are going to have more of a direct impact on education, teaching, and learning. The first one listed is... And again, I met with Jim and Michaela. These were not... These are not decisions that were made lightly or made in isolation. We discussed these things to the best of our ability. And Christine and I present All-Star. So, we have $1,500 library from the library line. That would be the Health Online Database. $1,200 from the AB line. This would affect the update of Auditorium AB system. We have $1,000 in the repair of equipment. This would mean that we would not be able to replace worn-out band equipment. We have $2,000 in transportation. This would affect our ability to... To help fund music festival transportation and the expansion of our... The hope for an expanded interscholastic sports. And $4,000 in ELA tax, which would delay moving forward with the updated ELA curriculum. ELA curriculum, that better aligns with the ELA standards. So clearly all of these things would have an impact on, on teaching and learning. The total here, and we're not necessarily implying that you should take all of them as a total, but just per total, that's an additional nine thousand seven hundred. And then we talked about the possibility, and again, the issue here that we have to remember is equity for our students in terms of their ability to stay active, to participate or to get extra help. So we wrestled with the idea of having only two days instead of three days for after-school late buses. One of the things we thought that we could do to try to mitigate this is to have clubs, especially at the, clubs that only meet certain days of the week, for those to be on days when the late buses were available. Again, it's not ideal, but this, we're, we're getting too lean to, to not affect these types of things. So we're, we're asking for your consideration, we recognize that these are not easy decisions, but we have, we have done as you were requesting and we have provided you with the means to get there if necessary.
So again, this budget process started back in September, meeting with the town of Kingston, it's part of their bylaws. And when we met with the town of Kingston, they asked us to bring in a level service budget. Numbers at that point weren't very clear, but the suggestion was somewhere between two and three. We've met with Halifax on two occasions when they proposed tri-town finance committee meetings and invited us to be part of that conversation. And Charlie has come before this committee two times to speak publicly about Halifax's financial situation. When we came up with version one, Halifax was quite concerned with our number and didn't feel that they were able to support it as we presented it and asked us to look at areas to make a cut, to make it more feasible for them to get it passed at town meeting. Plimpton has given guidance that's been consistent year after year to attempt to come to a budget between two and a half and three percent. And all of those numbers were unadjusted for the assessments to the different towns based on Destiny and the DOR regulations. So when we came before the committee last week, we didn't have all of our members here. It was my decision as, as the chair not to enter into a robust conversation about the budget. I understand that some people were offended, some feelings were hurt because we didn't discuss it in more detail and I apologize for that. I realize that including two teachers' jobs, livelihood in the cuts that we made to the budget is a real thing, real people with real lives and families, people who care about them, students who love their class and can't wait to see them every day. But we are in a situation with the towns where we need to bring up a budget that's best for the kids that we can also get past at town meeting. And the goal is always to get all three towns to support our budget, even though we can do it with two. We're trying to build a cooperative team here between the schools and the towns and all try to march in the same direction with that ultimate goal of providing the best possible education for our communities. While Charlie was here speaking on behalf of Halifax and asking us to cut, he also acknowledged the fact that if we start cutting too deep, we're going to erode the wonderful education system we built here. And there's an acknowledgement from all three of the towns, the reason people move to Halifax, Plimpton and Kingston is because of the schools, because of you. We do realize that. So again, I apologize if you feel that we glazed over that conversation last week. We intend to enter into that conversation tonight. So thank you for being here and thank you for your time. I did ask Jill on behalf of the committee with your approval to go back and bring these cuts to us, making sure that none of them affected personnel. It wasn't because I necessarily believed we needed to go deeper, but I wanted to give the committee an opportunity, if it felt so, to go below the current level. Now Christine, I don't want to put you on the spot too much with the version we brought in last month, we were at a two ninety-one?
Two point nine one percent increase in our budget, yes.
With off the top, the twenty-nine thousand dollars from the Mayflower municipal health group and the new transportation adjustment with no other adjustments, could you give me a percentage?
Two point seven six. That'd be an overall increase of seven hundred seventeen thousand six hundred twenty-four dollars.
Can you repeat that?
Seven hundred sixteen, seven hundred seventeen thousand six hundred twenty-four dollar increase over the FY twenty budget, then it'd be two point seven six percent.
All right. So I just wanted to establish some parameters for us to understand where we are before we engage in this conversation. So I'll open the floor to any of the committee members who want to discuss what's going on here.
Eric, do you have an updated number if we just do the thirty-nine thousand dollars from the, from the top with the new assessment against and what that percentage is?
I have not done that yet, but I, I will be able to do that.
Okay.
In short.
Paul.
And it might be too minor, but if we, what does the overall percentage increase look like with the fifty thousand four hundred number reduction? I know it's only a few dollars more, but-
If I went all the way down to, I just want to make sure I have my pieces. So that would be including the thousand dollars and the three thousand dollars, that would bring us to two point seven two. I'm sorry, wait a minute, I'm wrong. If I just did the ten thousand dollars for the grounds of fertilization, the fourteen hundred dollars for the laptop-
Plus the-
Thirty-nine.
The first two.
Yes.
That would, that brings me, that does bring me to two point seven two and that's an increase of seven hundred and six thousand.
Yeah, that fifty thousand four hundred includes the two top lines plus those from the high school.
Jason, can you remind me, so part of the reason that we went back and added, asked for some additional stuff was partially from the conversation we had with Carl Pike? Last time Carl had asked us-
We came back for these numbers because we had been invited to a tri-town finance committee meeting. When Carl and Charlie both stood up and spoke, they didn't give us a clear indication if a two ninety-one would pass at their town meetings. Consequently, we did go to a tri-town finance committee meeting and Plimpton indicated what they have years past, that they're comfortable supporting a budget that's between two and a half and three percent. Though they haven't voted on it, we still have to meet with them independently. Carl also indicated that Kingston appreciated where we ended up with that number and felt that the finance committee in selection of Kingston would also most likely be able to support that number.
The two point nine one?
The two point nine one. So I had asked Jill to do this prior to that meeting. And Halifax did continue to reiterate how difficult these numbers will be for their town and to sustain these kinds of numbers into the future. And they actually asked us quite, point blank, are we being strategic with our budget every year or are we just going year by year? And I indicated to them that the role of the outlet health program was something that took about nine years to come fully online. From the time we started discussing, saw the need in the marketplace, saw the desire for our staff and for our students to get involved in our program, to rolling it out the way we did, using the Perkins Grant and getting chapter seventy-four funding, that that was all very, very intentional and strategic in that plan. Believe it or not, there was some indication they wanted us to have a plan moving forward for the next few years of where we make additional cuts to this year to be prepared for their inability to potentially pay for the types of budgets we're bringing forth to them. Again, it only takes two towns to approve a budget, but when I have a town telling me that they're having difficulty paying the bill, I need to listen with open ears and understand where the commitment is from.
Well, I think we ought to.
I was just going to add to that because we were talking about Kingston. Kingston's in a unique situation this year because of the assessment and increased minimum contribution, that the increase to Kingston is a lot more than this, which is why, you know, we're looking at other cuts. And prior to discussing with Carl at that tri-town meeting, they were looking at both the K through six and the regional to come in under three and this won't for Kingston, this is going to be higher. This is just a one-year hit to Kingston, it could happen again next year, but it's just more of a unique situation this year.
Our original budget came in at about a three-six.
Right. But Kingston's is, was like a four point eight-
With the assessment.
Right, it was a four point eight and I think it'll be a little bit lower, but it's still substantially more than the three percent that they were looking for.
But Carl from Kingston does look at it through a different lens than Charles from Halifax does. Carl looks at how we manage in our budget and what is the increase we're bringing and he understands that part of the formula of the assessment is when you have a few more kids to educate, it's going to cost you a few more dollars. Charlie, because he feels he's up against it financially, wants to look at that bottom line number of the assessment. So that's just the two different philosophies being brought forth by those stakeholders from their towns.
So I've got the total assessment, if you took those top three, the twenty-nine thousand, ten thousand, eleven thousand, four hundred, the total assessment at two point nine four.
To Kingston?
Total.
Oh.
I have Kingston at five, uh, four point five four. Christina, you got-
I was seeing what happened with the budget before I left my budget page, so I haven't, it wasn't there yet.
Did you do all three?
Yeah. Halifax is point eight-two, Plimpton's point four-six. So the point four-six, so I have, it's, it's Kingston. That's, it's the minimum contribution shift that happened.
Right. And we were in the hall before we even started.
Right.
I mean-
So I mean, it's not so much the number for the town of Halifax for this budget year, it's what happens when that shift occurs, will the town be able to afford that? And then just the other thing, today wiped out, you know, at this point in time, we're, we're down three is worth of economic growth in the stock market at this point in time. We're back to two thousand seventeen numbers. So I just, with us voting the budget, I would be very cautious to, to have a plan to go forward come July first when the legislature votes and they cannot meet the chapter seventy number. I just think that's something that we ought to consider because I don't see how-
Secretary Kaiser has already readjusted what we were looking at for the increase to low-income students and indicated that's how his math works. So it would be up to the legislature to, to increase that line. We would benefit if that line increased, but like Gordon was saying, if the state doesn't have the revenues, they will use their get out of jail free card, subject to appropriation and that will leave it on the backs of the municipalities to deal with it. And we very likely could look at making some cuts after the fact during the summer to our budget that we passed at town meeting, which could put us in a bind.
I know we have to vote something tonight in order to meet the, the regional agreement, but I would, I'm really concerned about what's going to happen if we don't see a bounce back in the next month, where the towns are going to be, where the school system's going to be. And you know that if this virus does break out here, you're going to have added costs for this fiscal year and we're going to have to cover those someplace as well, so.
It's not yet, it's when, let's be honest. I think it's, it's important for us to take all of that into consideration here. So again, an acknowledgement of the fact that we have two teaching positions in the budget as it is, with the numbers where they are, I don't see how we can move the budget without those two positions being, being in this budget. I don't know how we can move this number forward by putting those teachers' positions back in. It's, and it's not an easy decision for us to make.
Do we, what is it, to put them back in?
To put the teachers back in? Well, we just, a hundred twenty thousand, we've just managed to take fifty thousand out, which moved the needle about three tenths of a percent. So that would put us back down about another three quarters of a cent there.
While we're talking about the budget, the other discussion that came up was the school resource officer at the tri-town meeting again, where the town of Halifax does not want to vote for that as a warrant article or a sub-line, they wanted us to include that within the budget. I don't see how that, we do that, but I just thought we should talk about that as well, so.
Okay. So the Halifax finance committee asked us to put the both, the full-time and the half-time resource officer into the budget and I explained to them our philosophy was we didn't want to put Halifax in the position that if the two towns voted it, they'd be stuck with it. We wanted to give them the autonomy to vote yes or no. We know it's not the mechanism they want, but they weren't willing to allow us to add it into the budget without making additional cuts. So they're already asking us to cut the budget back to a feasible number for them to afford, but wanted us to add those two pieces into the budget. So it just seemed like a non-starter during that very brief informal conversation about it, the tri-town finance committee meeting. Again, I took responsibility for us not having additional conversations about it throughout the year. That was something that Joy and I had planned on doing, but obviously with the transition, the search, the interviews and then the hiring of Jill, that was not something that we found the need to get together with Halifax to discuss, nor did we receive any communication that it was a top priority from that either. So I did apologize on our behalf for not getting together with them to have that discussion. So we're going to forward it unless you direct me otherwise as an article for town meeting to be put to the floor. Plimpton, last year again, they voted as an article and it was voted unanimously even after Halifax had voted it down at their town meeting. If you would like to put it into the budget, we can. It will increase our number and I will not cut another number of our teaching staff, our support staff or administration to make the number any longer than it is right now. I just as an individual-
As an individual, yeah.
Paula?
I, it doesn't belong in the budget. We have to get Halifax past this issue somehow and it's a longer conversation than, than right now. I, I'm floored that we're struggling so much with my town to make this happen. It doesn't belong in the budget for a number of different valid reasons, so I, I'm not in favor of that whatsoever.
Okay. I appreciate your guidance on that. Anybody have any further input, questions, concerns about the budget where we are right now? Eric?
Just looking at the potential cuts in here, I, I think I'm okay with the thirty-nine thousand at the top obviously and, and the high school cuts. The middle school, I probably want to get a little bit more feedback if we're seriously going to consider this, but the late buses, absolutely not. I, I, that's a, we, we've discussed that in the past and that's just a, that's dumb.
It's a detriment.
Not saying it's dumb that you brought it up, I'm just saying that it's-
It's a detriment to the students.
We shouldn't do it.
To their education, for the students that are having trouble and for those students that want to participate in culture.
I think our superintendent made the best bring possible about that, it's an equity issue. You know, the kids who have parents who can pick them up, still be eligible with technical aids and working-class students, students who don't have parents available to come and grab them.
Joy wasn't yelling at you.
No. I prefer with Eric giving you, I think with what my superintendent stated, that's an equity issue and I wouldn't be willing to go there either.
There's one other one, I think a pet one. Is Mr. Lake still here? Yeah. My son has saxophone, I guess, when he was here. Is that saxophone still broken and is that what that thousand dollars would be going towards?
I, I mean, I can't speak to the, the line item and specifically, I don't think that they would know better in the superintendent's office, but yeah, generally it's, those funds are used for repair or replacement of those instruments, yeah.
So we're talking about a saxophone that's been broken for over four years now, so they, they, I think they deserve to be considered for that.
Leslie?
Jill or Ryan, can you explain a little bit more, or maybe even Jim, about the ELA text, the delay and the impact of the curriculum alignment?
Sure. I'm, I'm going to say just very generally because of changes that they're making with their, their curriculum in terms of their backwards design approach and making sure it's aligned with the state's standards. My understanding is that Jim put in a request for a new text that would help us better align. Jim can speak more specifically as to what types of texts these are and the kind of impact that would have.
So what they, what they've been working on and what they've done is they've gone and researched different books that they can incorporate into their classroom to better align and better build, again, their curriculum throughout the year. So they were pulling out some of the older texts and some of the older information and they were going to, you know, again, incorporate these new texts. So what that line does is it supports the fact that they have already, obviously already started this curriculum redesign, they already started the units on it, they've already have books picked out and that's what that was going to support. So when we talk about delay, obviously we don't have the books to give to the students, then it would delay their ability to incorporate that and stay with their curriculum that they currently have, with the books that they currently have.
Okay.
So I, I don't, I didn't even want to take the high school stuff, but if that's with the committee, we would say okay to, the way it's laid out, I understand it and I'll go with the consensus of the committee there. But I don't like anything below that. I don't want to go in for it, you know, at all, but I don't know how the rest of you feel at this point.
I'm not comfortable with the reduction in the after-school buses, as Eric indicated. I'm not comfortable with the ELA texts, textbooks not being ordered. I'm not loving the other items and I'm honestly not sure how much they're going to move the dial.
Right.
Yeah, I, I guess, I, I mean, that was kind of my point, I, I agree with Paul, I mean, we're just picking at the small apples on the tree and it's, each one of them is extremely painful in some way, even though they're really small items. So I mean, I think it's almost like we need to go for something big or not at all.
That's, that's literally the position we're left in.
Yeah.
And we're beyond these little things because we've already, we've already had to incorporate two very large items and those are two individuals that we will no longer have as teachers and so we're likely to be different in this regard. You know, for a combination of reasons, our town's inability to pay, the state's inability to recognize that we need some of the funds as well, we're in an awful position. I'll entertain a motion not to accept any of the additional options.
I'll make that motion.
Can you clarify that?
He means that underneath where it says additional options.
All those in favor? All right, so we're done talking about that. Currently with the Mayflower, the new transportation bill, with the fuel clause, the high school grounds and fertilization, and the teaching supplies, the wellness laptop, we've decreased the budget an additional $50,400, a percentage of 2.72%. And that's where we are. Leslie?
Jill, I mean, I'm sure you did, but I just want to ask, did you all, in your proposed reductions, consider administrative cuts? And if so, what was considered?
So we, this person has, okay, I have to. We did, we did consider moving a position from a 12-month to a 10-month. It was, it's not currently in the contract, so we were legally advised not to do that. When we were considering this option, we had that discussion with this person that we were considering.
So of all the other administrative, non-teaching staff, that was the only administrative cut you considered?
Yes.
Any other questions, concerns? Ed?
Do we have any assets, like vehicles or anything like that, to sell? Just do about it.
Everyone gives up a kidney.
What did you say?
Everyone gives up.
You want us to sell assets? Everyone just coughs up a kidney.
Okay, sounds good.
But I just want, for the narrative, remember the years we passed over the truck, we welded that together several different times.
That's why I'm one of the people that was pushing for that vehicle, so.
So I just want to make sure that we're clear, we haven't been frivolous with the purchase of vehicles for maintenance of the grounds. And we literally had a truck that was welded together several times by our kids.
I said that more to make a point.
But I think it's important to give the narrative. No, we don't. We don't have any assets like vehicles and everything, so.
Can I just clarify one thing? Leslie asked a question, and I said no, we didn't. From the formal standpoint, that didn't make our list, and we didn't, we didn't have a conversation. There were conversations amongst the team, and amongst the smaller team, in terms of considering other positions and what kind of impact that would have on school functions, and our ability to meet regulatory needs as well. So there were discussions, but none of those had as far as conversations with people who might be impacted.
Thank you for that clarification. Do you have a question, Leslie?
Well, I guess this is more of a comment than anything. I mean, having been a resident of Kingston since 1998, I guess that's 20-something years now. I, I mean, we've always been very supportive of our schools. You know, we voted override years ago, and I'd like to think we could muster the troops in some respects, but I think this whole landscape has changed quite a bit. And I don't think 4.5% of Gordon's adjusted numbers, I don't doubt you because you're handy, but I'm sure Christine will back it up. I just don't see how that's going to happen, and Kingston's always been the one that's been sort of relied on to sort of get there. And then I think that having the, at least Halifax, I don't know about Plimpton, but not knowing how this will eventually downstream to them in out-years, I just don't see how this is going to happen. I think we need to dig a little deeper. I mean, you know, it's not that I wouldn't go to town meeting and vote for something, it's just I don't think the town's going to do it.
So.
So I'm thinking we need to dig a little deeper, especially on the administrative side, maybe.
And Chris was with me at the tri-town meeting. I did get the feeling from Halifax that they acknowledged that we made some deep cuts. They understood that it was personnel. I made it very clear to them at that meeting. I made it clear to them at that meeting that we do have a strategic plan of how we're looking at years to come, and how our budget's going to increase and move over the next few years to the best of our ability to broadcast it. I didn't get an indication that they were going to vote against our budget, but they still had other departments they were waiting for to come in. So at this level, especially with the fact that they're on the winning end of the assessment potentially this year, I'm not concerned about Halifax right now, though I can't tell you that they voted to support this budget. Gordon?
The other item was the shift for the shared costs. We had numbers that were always in Silver Lake that got shifted to the elementary school this year. So keeping everything the same minus those two positions, the number is actually higher than what we have here to keep everything the same. It's just accounted for differently, but the number, Silver Lake's number has decreased because of the move to shared cost. So that's another item to consider.
Do you mean this, the assessment specifically? Because the budget's still the same, the budget's still.
The assessment number dropped.
So it's how the assessment that is shared between the region and the towns?
Yeah, so the, so I know for Halifax, it was about a $40,000 shift. So Halifax increased on the shared cost $40,000 because we lowered that cost on this assessment portion of the budget, because we increased revenue from that.
Yeah. The reallocation of how we pay for the positions based on who's utilizing them didn't make the numbers appear to change, but like Christine's saying, the bottom line is, the towns are still paying for their share, it's just where we're paying for it from. It's more of an accounting issue. I understand that that makes our number here at Silver Lake go down, and our elementaries appear to go up as well.
I'm just trying to point out that with this, we would have had, without that shared revenue change, which we increased the shared revenue, our number for the assessment for each town would be higher. So.
But our elementary wouldn't have gone up the two-point, it would have only, it would have been reduced by the amount of the assessment.
Right, so when you looked at Halifax and Plimpton's numbers.
The towns are paying the same, it's just they're paying a little bit more K through six than the regions.
Does anyone on the committee have the desire to take this number lower?
Can I comment?
Please.
So I have had conversations with some of the more conservative folks in our town, people who are really conservative hawks, and what I'm hearing back, and I've sort of said some of these numbers, that they'll support the money for the schools, but they want to cut the crap out of general government. So they support the schools, but, and that includes police and fire, they want to cut over there, but they do support our school. Those are just some anecdotal, there's always going to be people who are going to stand up and speak, but some of those people who stand up and speak are the ones who've said they would support our school members too, so.
It's good to know.
People I don't get along with, but they told me the same.
Does anybody have a desire to take the number lower? Seeing none, do any, you have any desire to try and put items back in? Seeing none. Lisa, do you have the roll call vote for the budget?
No.
Okay. So it doesn't have to be unanimous. We need two-thirds. We need 11 votes to pass. We have more than enough votes here tonight to make sure that we pass the budget. So the overall increase for our budget would be coming in at a 2.72% with the additional increases noted tonight, being the adjustment for the Mayflower municipal health group, the new transportation, big fuel clause, some money for the grounds and fertilization, and some money for a wellness laptop. So do I have a motion to approve the budget as presented?
I make a motion to approve.
Take Paul with Ed as a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
We have official votes that have to be read from the budget.
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead, you can make your motions.
So this, just to clarify, Christine has the 29,000, 10,000, 11,400.
This is reduced from 50,000 quarter for the previous budget.
Okay. So I motion that the Silver Lake Regional School Committee approve the 2021 operating budget of $26,698,578 as the amount deemed necessary for the operation of the regional schools in the Silver Lake District for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, against, any abstentions, it's unanimous.
Okay. I motion that the Silver Lake Regional School Committee approve the use of $766,250 of E and D funds to fund the 2020, 2021 fiscal year capital plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Against, abstentions, it's unanimous.
Okay, make a motion that the Silver Lake Regional School Committee approve the 2020, 2021 construction budget of $1,515,905 as the amount deemed necessary for the construction cost of the regional schools in the Silver Lake District for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Close, abstentions, it's unanimous.
I make a motion to accept the assessments as presented. The assessments are deemed using the regional agreement. The regional agreement identifies the statutory method as the method used to compute the assessments.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Against? Abstentions. One vote against. Thank you, Gordon, appreciate you being up close. Paul?
I struggle with the comment that we are not strategic in our thought process around budgets. I personally take offense to it, but I'm going to say I struggle with it. Should we set up an agenda item to talk through that topic a little bit more, not tonight, in the future as a committee? I mean, we don't make widgets, we can't automate this building and have, you know, the students come in every day and sit in front of robots or anything. This, the heartbeat and the basis of education are, it's driven by people, it's driven by our staff. I don't know how strategic you can be without the staff, so I, you know, I don't, I don't really get that concept, that comment, as much as I guess I should. Having said that, should we have a dialogue where we jump out of the box and we come up with where else can we go over the next two, three, five years? I don't know what the answer to that is, but to satisfy the town's desire to be more strategic, we want to try and see what strategic might mean for us. I agree that mathematically, this does not work long-term. I mean, I'm challenging John Creed, John said that a lot. We're hitting, every year, we struggle with our budget. We're hitting the plateau where there is no more. So where do we go from here? We need to figure that out.
I don't disagree with you, but I'll tell you, when, when that question was asked, I believe it was genuine from the person asking it, but it felt like it had been gotten questioned.
Slap me in the face.
You know, we said in these meetings, we said in subcommittee meetings, dreaming about how we can support the administration and the staff to develop the most extraordinary education experience possible for our kids in elementary schools. And we are always balancing that with the understanding that we have to pay for it at the end of the day. You know, it wasn't the time or place, like you said at that meeting, for me to really go through the entire process of us developing the allied health program. But it was a real paradigm shift for me as a committee member to think that I have to stop dreaming about what's possible, and I have to start, really, a nightmare of how do I take apart something that I love and I've helped to build, and I've been a real small part of, but I've been very proud to be a part of this. So I think it's extremely valuable if we had that conversation, but I would also want to make sure that we invited in those stakeholders so they could be part of that conversation here, maybe with a little bit more depth, you know, the time, the effort, and the thought we put into the decisions we make. So I think it's a great idea.
I'd like to make a mature comment to a person from Halifax, also said, planned economies, that's kind of sounding like what Silver Lake Union used to do. And planned economies don't work. That's why the Silver Lake Union doesn't exist anymore, and we are not going to govern this length, this union. Year-to-year thing, so.
Any further comment? I appreciate your work, the thought that you've put into this year's budget, and I know we're not done with it yet, and there's still a lot of work to be done with our towns, with our selectmen, with our finance committees, and most importantly, with our constituents at town meeting. So I appreciate everything you've put into it so far, and I thank you for all the work. Jill, how about a calendar for next year?
Calendar, can you pack it? We have a draft proposal. We have reviewed this with our administrative team. We have tried to keep it as close to last year's calendar as possible. It is the same in terms of number of half-days and service days. I will draw your attention to a few things. Our in-service for teachers would be on August 31st and September 1st. The first day of school for students would be September 2nd. Voting Day, November 3rd. We would strategically plan our in-service for teachers to avoid the issues that arise when our schools are voting sites. December break is there for you to examine, in keeping with the fall of what we have done with the past, by recognizing that each year it's a little bit different. February is lined up with President's Day, and, let's see. Graduation is scheduled for June 5th, and one of the things that we wanted to make sure, we don't just have graduation because it's Saturday after blah blah. We also have to make sure that students, our seniors are in school, don't graduate any more than 12 days before the last, the tentative last day of school for other students. In addition, they have to be in school for 168 days, which is less than other students, which is why when we have snow days, our seniors don't have to make them up, and which is why our seniors are so very disciplined this year. Just to let you know why we have it on that date. We try to keep with tradition, but there may be times when we need to change that salary to a different salary to make sure it lines up with our last tentative day of school, because we can't have seniors out any sooner than 12 days before the rest of our students. So that's why we do it that way. So we have had support from both Halifax and Kingston, who decided to vote the budget. You vote the calendar.
I know this is, I know this is a minor directive I suggested, but it's pretty important.
You have the option of either voting tonight or not voting tonight. I just wanted to let you know what other committees have.
We voted it on Monday, Kingston.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Go ahead.
Halifax voted it already.
Seeing no questions, would anybody like to vote?
Make a motion that we accept the calendars presented.
One second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for voting, I appreciate it.
So from Chairman's prerogative, I am going to skip over all business and move into the reports of specific committees, Silver Lake Education Association.
So I don't have a formal statement.
Um, so I don't have a formal statement tonight, but I did wanna say that I appreciate the chairman bringing up, um, my email about the two teaching positions, but, uh, we don't have anything further for tonight. Thank you.
Administrative review?
So, no meeting. We need to, I think, probably get one, um, on the books. Um, just that we've had a little bit of conversation about the superintendent's evaluation. Obviously, we won't be doing a superintendent evaluation this spring, because even though we know she's doing a fabulous job, we're gonna give her a little time to settle in before we do that, so.
Well, just have some two weeks now, yeah.
Um, but, but we will need to put together sort of a more formal timeline and, uh, plan for evaluation for, um, getting goals and then setting the evaluation employees for next year.
I mean, if Desi pushes back with how we're managing it, we can always use, um, the entry plan that the superintendent and assistant superintendent put together as our guide wants to put forth some sort of evaluation, just to meet those regulations, but.
Both entry plans have my original entry plan that I presented to you, um, during the selection process, and our summary that we wanted to present to the community at large have goals embedded in it, so. We can also speak to the, the rubric, I, you know, I can speak to the rubric as well if needed, but.
Unless we're directed to do that, we're gonna take that off. Okay? Okay.
CTE?
No meetings.
All right, so Chairman's report, um. Jill and I have been in conversation quite often since she's taken help, she's, uh, thrust through the crisis here at the high school in, uh, managing, uh, the crisis that our whole world is facing with the pandemic of the COVID-nineteen virus.
With an excellent team, so.
But Jill and I have been in contact, um, routinely, sometimes multiple times a day, as she's getting new information, uh, from the state and from the Superintendent's Association. Um, I, in my position with MASC, have also been, uh, privy to some conversations with state officials and, um, getting guidance from different departments of how we should be proceeding. So, in your packet, there is a response that has, um, been circulating around the Commonwealth in the schools of how we should approach, um, the situation. Obviously, information is changing by the minute, um, but deferring to the departments of health within the town and also the state agencies, uh, Jill has the authority to cancel school, if she needs necessary for the safety of our students, but, um, the departments of health can also give us a call and make a very, very strong suggestion that we knock the schools down. We're working in cooperation with those departments. Um, you know, we're waiting to see, uh, if there's any further guidance from the state on how we're gonna proceed. I don't know if you were aware, um, but the governor, along with the Commissioner of Education, did come out and reiterate that if schools miss any days from this point on, they only have to make up the total amount of snow days left in their calendars planned. Uh, so we have already used three of our five planned snow days. So if in the eventuality, we used any more, we would only have to make up two of those at the end of the year. So whether we have to cancel school for a day or two, or we have to go deeper, uh, we are required right now by state law only to make up two more days of school. So I know Jill is working again with the super committees of Massachusetts, um, and we are, you know, constant communication. She has her team, um, working to sanitize surfaces, custodial staff is working, I know teachers are constantly reminding students of their hygiene habits and washing hands and using hand sanitizer, tossing into their elbows. Walking in tonight, someone gave me an elbow bump instead of a handshake. You know, we're all adapting. I know the background stress is creating on everyone, uh, even the kids, so just being mindful of that in our community, uh, the stress levels are high. Um, but you can see today, our principals are adapting, uh, to, to how our routines are here at school. I just wanted to, to bring, to bear the fact that we are talking about the situation and we're really letting, uh, the experts provide us with the guidance, uh, but Jill, um, has been making some excellent decisions and keeping me informed what those are. Um, I have full confidence in, in her decision-making thus far, and I continue to have faith in her decisions and her team's decisions moving forward to keep our staff and our students safe.
One thing I'd like to let you know, there is a, a change originally in my email yesterday. We hope to have the commissioner's press conference today. It hasn't been till tomorrow morning, so we're waiting for guidance there. So originally, I hoped it would be this afternoon, but it won't be till tomorrow morning, so I wanted to give you that because, um, that's the most updated.
That's great.
Today, we, um.
They bring.
Oh, great. Uh, today, we worked with our, our principals, uh, to empower our principals to cancel non-essential events as they were coming, uh, in and, uh, as needed. So, um, for example, the high school has canceled the Pem rally. Um, while we love to offer things like that for our students given the circumstances, we won't be able to offer that tomorrow. Um, we are considering virtual opportunities to engage with our community and with our students if the need should be. Uh, but again, we're awaiting, um, further guidance from the state, uh, on, on those types of things. We've said no international interstate travel. The, uh, MIAA has canceled, um, tournaments, and they have played the spring season until at least the end of March, and it will be revisited, so to stay tuned. We are working on an educational continuity plan in the event we are required to submit one to the state. Um, and again, we don't have guidance as to what will be required, but we're starting to think about what that may look like and what we may, what we may be able to do, but we have, um, we have no guidance on this yet, and so we are not, um, we may never even be to use this, this, this plan. As rumors come in, and we do get rumors, uh, we, we have directed our principals to report any and all rumors to the, first, the local board of health, if possible. If they are unable to get a hold of the local board of health, they have been given a number to contact them in Mass State Department of Health, where we will get given information from an epidemiologist in terms of what next steps will be. Uh, and they will be determining, to a certain extent, how we handle individual potential cases or suspected cases as, as we review them. Uh, and that's how we have been advised to handle this thus far. That could change. I could be, I can have a very different presentation for you tomorrow. Uh, I'm just telling you what it is right now and where we stand right now.
And honestly, you, you don't know what that presentation tomorrow is, I would say.
So again, um, we've been, we were work, Brian and I have been working with, uh, our, our, our leadership team. We have been reaching out to, um, our staff members, staff leaders, um, for, for support and information and, um, trying to determine potential next steps. Um, we are looking at things like limiting, uh, asking, uh, limit access to the building for, uh, things on volunteers. Um, we've given our, our principals, uh, the, the power to, um, ask volunteers not to commit to our buildings at least for the time being, uh, until further notice, because it's just additional people in the building that, while we appreciate them and they help our, um, things run more smoothly, um, we felt that it would be a step that we could take that wouldn't have as much impact as on the, essential, we're defining as being able to educate our students and feeding our students. That's where we are right now.
Any questions for Jill?
Uh, I was told to ask about, uh, I have two kids who will be going to two different proms. Um, I'm sure you're waiting on guidance from.
We like to make plans, but we, um, I, I know that Principal Gil has already been in contact with her advisors, saying about possible, um, contingency plans and, and options, should that be when necessary. But again, we, we hope to have further guidance before we, we jump to that in a future.
Gordon.
What are the current dates right now for prom?
Twenty-seventh of March.
March twenty-seventh and May fifteenth.
Any further questions for Jill, because I have to bring up continuity of government with you. Okay, so, um, MASC has been in contact with the Attorney General to ask about the continuity of government. Um, the Attorney General says, and this is interesting, because usually politicians don't say this, she doesn't have the authority, um, to change the open meeting law, nor does she have the authority to change, uh, quorum. We're lucky that we're a regional school district, and we have voted previously for remote participation, but in order for us to have remote participation, we still need to have a quorum physically in a room together. Now.
You could be over there.
I'd be six foot, I'd be over there.
The Attorney General has stated that the chairman has the right to decide what's on the agenda. Uh, you know, so I was in a meeting with, uh, the leadership of Mass Association of School Districts last night, and some people game-planned out how the agendas could be adjusted. Um, pretty much, we would eliminate everything except for items that were needed to be voted, um, to maintain, uh, the ability for the school district to run. So principals' reports, uh, reports of special committees, we'd all submit, um, in a paper version, and, um, the rest of it, we would, uh, have a TV probably in here that would have a broadcast in another room, so if anybody from the public wanted to view it, that would be acceptable. For having an open meeting available to the public live as it took place, they don't have to be in a room, has to be a live telecast. It could not be a recording that would be provided later. Um, and like you said, and I know you were joking around about it, we could literally spread out, um, to give ourselves some social distancing, um, but they reiterated the importance of the continuity of government and for us to be able to do our duties, and, uh, I just wanted to bring to bear what we're contemplating moving forward if necessary. Any questions? Thank you, Eric, very much for, uh, cooperation with this. I know this is a stressful and tough time for everyone, uh, but please rest assured that Jill and her team are doing a great job managing this.
No legislative agenda for it. Moving on to negotiations.
We met last week, um, and we will discuss later in executive session, more of the details.
Thank you.
Pat? Uh, we had a meeting this week, uh, continued to discuss about trying to obtain a new building. Um, apparently, one of the buildings, they have, um, had a coronavirus positive in place, so, uh, they gave us, pretty extensive, what'd you say? Uh, handout on that. Um, is that the name? I think that was pretty much it, that was it.
Thank you, Eric.
Policy.
Uh, six p.m. in Halifax, I'm, I'm sorry, April sixth in Halifax. Six p.m.?
Five.
Five p.m., thank you.
Five p.m. in Halifax. Is that prior to your Halifax elementary meeting?
Yep, so you have an hour to wrap it up.
Busy. Always speaking.
It's April sixth. Five p.m. I went to one of those. Those are really long sometimes.
Safety facilities, fees, and revenue. Safer.
Yep, um, we did not have a meeting this evening. We probably should have. I'll take responsibility for that if you post one. What we shared with you tonight and the number we voted for the budget is the number that the committee's been voting for, um, a, a number of meetings now, and what you have here is a list of priorities we feel, um, are, are the ones for the capital plan we want to chapter this coming year. Having said that, we voted a number. We can massage these buckets, if you will, these categories a bit further, and I would like to bring the, the committee together before our next meeting, assuming we, we have one face-to-face, what have you. Um, but at a high level, um, we're continuing to, um, do repairs to the middle school and the high school, which obviously is, is a concern and is an ongoing effort. Um, we are doing some work to the tile floor and the entrance way of the high school. Um, we've actually had people trip, get their heels caught. This is actually gonna be an insurance issue. We're gonna hurt somebody if we don't, um, address this. Um, middle school garage, this is an effort that will be made, uh, in conjunction with the CTE students, um, to build a garage, um, over by the, the water tank. It's, we were planning, um, so that's a win-win to put a garage up and utilize our CTE students. Um, the parking lot and roads, um, as you know, we had an incident after one of our meetings of somebody tripping and falling because our parking lot is in disrepair, so we have taken, um, the, um, highest concern, uh, parking lot first, and, uh, we'll be doing some, um, significant work to the, the Lake Street parking lot to begin with. Um, the athletic grounds, as was indicated earlier tonight in the discussion, we really need to attack our athletic fields in a, uh, methodical way with guidance from somebody who's able to give us the proper guidance. So, um, we are going to engage an outside consultant to come in and put together a, a plan after looking at our facilities to tell us what we need to tackle when and give us the, the right set of priorities. Um, it's, it's probably money well spent. I think we can spend our money in the future better if we know exactly what we need to do. Uh, middle school and high school's security cameras, again, in an effort to continue to make our schools safer for the, the students, we're gonna install additional cameras. Um, the CTE equipment, Elliott does a phenomenal job of working with the resources he has and asking for equipment replacement, uh, in a strategic way, but also only when it's absolutely necessary. Uh, this piece of equipment is forty years old. It's time to be replaced. You have to balance, um, the needs of the CTE program with the safety of the CTE students, so at some point, you just have to replace things, and, and it's time for this piece of equipment in the welding program. Um, additional servers, um, uh, you know, that, that continues to be, uh, you know, technology, you have to keep up with it. Um, and then the, um, what is this last thing? I never remember what this is.
Arrow hives. It's the wireless access.
Okay, this is more technology. Um, my, I go to beehives. I can't help it, so. So again, I think, um, the committee can look at this one more time if we wanna move some numbers around and suggest it and bring it forth to this committee, we will. However, again, tonight, we voted a, you know, a number that our, our E and D can support for, for this year's capital plan. We're lucky to have the ability to do these items, to be, you know, quite honest with you.
Paul, I know you're very modest and you don't like pats on the back very often, but at Halifax, we were asked about the capital plan by one individual, and the moment that individual said, "Do you have a capital plan?", everyone else in the room who knows our capital plan and knows the amount of time and effort we've put into it, kind of giggled at themselves. I just wanna say that this is definitely, um, our most important subcommittee, due to the fact that without this physical plan, the things that occur inside would be much more difficult to do. So I appreciate that you showed, taking care of this, this subcommittee.
It, it, you know, I think, thank you for that, and the committee does a wonderful job. It's a very dedicated group, and it has been historically, this is something this committee historically has taken very, very seriously, and I think historically has built and maintained a wonderful list, um, and it, it really needs to keep going.
Any questions concerning about the capital plan? Thank you, Paul. School starts time, done placeful dish and acknowledgement, and still waiting to see the year-long experiment of California Public Schools with their adjustments of their high school and middle school times to see, uh, what their research, uh, gives us. Treasuries report.
Okay, we had, um, we had sixteen total paid bills. Um, total was nine hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-two cents. Um, we had payroll for seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand, thirty dollars and nineteen cents. Um, for grant total, one million, seven hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty-two cents.
Any questions for Mike?
Receive and approve of that.
Cancel from time, Mike. Hey. Thank you again, everyone, for your hard work and all the subcommittees and every meeting for our schools. And that goes beyond just the people at the table here tonight. Do we have any signatures?
No.
All right. So important dates coming up. March 19th, we have an early release date of six at 12:35 PM for packed church conferences. On April 9th, we have a school choice public hearing and a school committee meeting. We are now going to enter into executive session only to return to regular session for the purposes of adjournment. The reason for our executive session is to discuss personnel matter and Silver Lake Education Association contract negotiations pursuant to Master General law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3. Drive a motion to enter into executive.
Some more.
Second. I have a roll call. Mike?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Ed?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, everybody. If you will, reset.
Yeah.